I have some brief background. District One Councilmember Roberto Trevino submitted a city council consideration request to rename Columbus Park to Piazza Italia Park. At this time, I'd like to take a moment here and turn the floor over to the councilmen to say a few words.
Thank you, Homer. Thanks for that introduction and thanks for holding this virtual town hall. Want to thank all the panelists for their involvement. Also, just want to start off by thanking the city Parks Department, the city manager. I want to thank the Christopher Columbus Italian Society, the indigenous community, the Black Lives Matter organizers, and all the great folks that have been helping in this particular effort. This is an amazing time in our city. We're seeing many people coming together to help one another. And this is another great story, another great story about how different sides came together to resolve something in a peaceful, in an amazing way that we can set the example for the entire nation for many years to come. This is an important park, and I'll tell you why it's an important park. It's an important park because of its unique cultural history. It's in a city primarily known as a Hispanic, primarily Mexican-American city. It is, it's amazing to find that we have an Italian neighborhood, an Italian community that has existed in this part of our city for so much of our history. And the park exists at the epicenter of what was once a thriving Italian neighborhood. You can now still see the Catholic Italian Church that's there, San Francisco de Paula, the Christopher Columbus Italian Hall, and of course, we now know the Columbus Park. And so the purpose of renaming the park to Piazza Italia is to really honor the Italian heritage. Really, that's the purpose of this park. The park since, well, at least for many, many years, has always been there to be, to help remind us of the once thriving neighborhood. Unfortunately, in the late 1950s, because of the highways that got installed in that location, the neighborhood is no longer. But what is still there is an amazing Italian spirit, Italian culture, and of course, the great spaghetti dinners that exist. We hope someday that we can expand those spaghetti dinners into this amazing park, help to preserve the Italian heritage, and most importantly, help embrace the diverse cultures in our city, because that's who we are here in San Antonio. So, thank you all for participating.
Thank you, councilmen. And I, you know, you pointed out, we're at a unique time here with a lot of social change and then amidst the pandemic, no less. So, thank you for your leadership and support during this time. So, I want to highlight, as required by Article 26, Section 6 of the naming and renaming ordinance, we've invited the community to provide written or oral comments about the proposed renaming of the park. As part of the process, a committee is formed to hear public comments, and then the committee will make the final recommendation to city council. So, next, I'd like to go ahead and introduce the committee members. I've introduced myself, Parks Director. We also have on the committee with us this evening Shannon Miller, who's the Director of the Office of Historic Preservation. Thank you for being with us this evening. Paolo Cristodoro with the Christopher Columbus Italian Society, and Eric Sandin, our Parks and Recreation Board Member for District One. As committee members, we will not have a speaking role this evening. Tonight's public meeting is solely to hear the public comment that we received today. So, as part of the ordinance that outlines the renaming process, notice is sent out to an area radius of 200 feet from where the park is located. As part of that, we also want to make sure that we're capturing as many people possible, making everyone aware of the proposed renaming of the park. So, we did advertise this public hearing on our website through a social media platform in digital and print format with the Express News, the Revard Report, La Presa, Southside Reporter, and leading up to today, two press releases were also sent to local media outlets. And to provide, you know, some additional context and background, I know the councilman highlighted of the rich history of this park and where it's located. And the proposed name, Piazza Italia, commemorates the culture and heritage of the Italian community in San Antonio. And there was a time before Columbus Park existed, as it does today, that this community flourished on the northern edge of downtown. And as part of the renaming and in the spirit of providing unity in public green space, the Italian Society's been instrumental in supporting getting to where we're at today with the proposed renaming of the park. And in doing so, the city will continue to honor the significant contributions of the Italian immigrants in our community. Members of the public have provided comment consistent with procedural rules and local governing law. This is a virtual public hearing format, as I pointed out earlier, and to ensure that we had public participation, accommodations were made to allow the public to provide input and their comments on the proposed renaming up through yesterday at 4:00 PM. And this was done in a variety of ways, from written comment via email to comments mailed in and provided directly to the Parks Department. People also had the opportunity to call in and leave a voice message to provide their input based on the proposed renaming, and the public had the ability to schedule ahead of time a live call-in. So, I don't believe that we had any live, pre-scheduled call-in for the public to participate, but we did receive responses in the other formats that were outlined. I have with us tonight, as part of our Parks Department team to help facilitate this public meeting, Ryan Evans, who is Executive Assistant for the department, and Veronica Moreno, who works with all of our council districts as liaison for the Parks Department and our various council member districts. So, next, we're going to move to reading into public record these comments. So, at this point, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Ryan Evans.
Good evening, everyone. We do have a number of written comments. I will start it off. Veronica will pick up in the middle, and then I will go ahead and conclude. So, I will go ahead and begin those comments now. Weston Burgy submitted, "Please keep Columbus Park as Columbus Park, since nothing is wrong with the name. Furthermore, renaming the park would unnecessarily enshun an important person in history, since Christopher Columbus's expedition began the first successful colonies from Europe that later founded our great country. Renaming the park to Piazza Italia is a gross disservice to the Italian community as Christopher Columbus's expedition in 1492 is as much more important an Italian contribution to our country's history than the pizza. Christopher Columbus should be celebrated for his contributions to our country and world, not demonized for his 15th century views through the lens of the 21st century." Mike Mendiola submitted, "Keep the statue in name of Columbus, its rich and profound tradition. We're not worshiping Columbus. We're learning rich and very significant history that changed the world for the better after it is said and done. Instead of going forward or going backwards, we are losing our sophistication." Sam Guido submitted, "I'm a 40-year member of the Christopher Columbus Italian Society, and I fully support the name change of the park to Piazza Italia, looking forward to a positive outcome." Roro Go submitted, "Instead of Columbus, it should be renamed by a native Indian hero Geronimo Sitting Bull, just a thought." Tony Magaro submitted, "I would like to express my appreciation in the city's renaming of Columbus Park. While I do not understand how the will of one takes precedence over the will of another when both have noble intentions, I understand the social challenges we face today. We move forward understanding the teachings of the patron saint of our community, San Francisco de Paula, and the thoughts of those offended by Columbus. My hope is that peace ensues and we focus on the current challenges we all face in COVID-19. This is a good solution that recognizes the contributions of the Italian-American community in our city. While our neighborhood is gone, our hearts are still part of the fabric that strengthens San Antonio." Lois and Marie Pizzano submitted, "In the early 1900s, Italian immigrants began migrating to the United States, some eventually settling in San Antonio. Many of these families resided in neighborhoods where the current Santa Rosa Hospital is located. In 1927, the Italian community built the San Francisco de Paula Catholic Church in the area known as Little Italy, which is located on north end of the current park. This area was and remains the religious and cultural hub for the Italian San Antonio community. Over subsequent decades, the Italian community in San Antonio grew and prospered, establishing successful businesses around the park and church while contributing to the city's growing economy and ethnic diversity, which are vital characteristics of San Antonio. Generations of the Italian community have worshipped, celebrated events, married, and were honored in death at this church and park. Their descendant continues these traditions. In addition, the church community and adjacent hall have contributed to various local charities to the very popular spaghetti dinners. The 100 Club is one of the recipients of the Italian community efforts. It is for these stated reasons that we strongly encourage your support in the renaming of the park, Piazza Italia, in order to acknowledge and honor the contributions and history of the Italian community in our city." The next submitted comment was longer than 300 words, so I'm going to read through the first 300. "My name is Roger Hernandez. I'm the proud grandson of the late Lydia Mendosa through my late mother, through my late mother Yolanda Hernandez, who was her second daughter. I would like to submit and nominate the name to name the park Lydia Mendosa Park. Although my grandmother was born in Houston, Texas, she spent the majority of her life here in San Antonio. Let me give you a little background on my late grandmother's lifetime achievements, accomplishments, and awards that I feel like make her more than worthy of having a city park named in her honor. Lydia Mendosa, born in, born 1916, died 2007, known as La Alondra de la Frontera, the Lark of the Border, La Cancionera de los Pobres, the Songstress of the Poor, and later as La Gloria de Texas, the Glory of Texas. She is the true queen of Tejano. One of the most talented and popular musicians in the history of Tejano music, Lydia Mendosa, was born into a musical family of Mexican immigrants in Houston in 1916. At the age of four, she built her own guitar out of wood, nails, and rubber bands. She performed on the streets with her family's band, La Corteta Carta Blanca, which won an audition in San Antonio for OK Records in 1928, recording 20 songs for $140. The family traveled to Michigan as migrant workers, but returned to San Antonio in the 1930s and resumed, and resumed performing notably in the city's Plaza del Zacate, earning just enough money to pay rent and buy food. Best known for her solo performances, Mendosa, with her soulful, with her soulful voice accompanied only by the playing of her 12-string guitar, recorded more than 1,000 songs in an enduring career that spanned seven decades." Linda Feo submitted, "I want to give you my opinion on the Christopher Columbus Park and also the statue. First, let me say, when the statue was being removed, I personally called the mayor's office and spoke with a woman who was very rude to me. I feel like I'm a taxpaying citizen, and my opinion should be taken without having to, one, be spoken to me like a person who is inconsequential. I was born and raised in San Antonio. I was also lied to the woman who told me the statue was only being repaired, please. It had been on the news that it was being removed. A select few thugs are telling the city what they want, but about, what they want, but what about the rest of the citizens? As I said, I was born here, went to Edison and Lee, and there are a lot of my classmates still living here. I love my city, but don't love the mayor making the decision to take our voices away. It was also an insult to me to them that the mayor asked to speak to their protesters and writers. Demands, demands. If I get a crowd to protest, will the mayor ask for our leader and listen to our demands? I'm very unhappy about the removal of the statue and oppose the renaming of Columbus Park to Piazza Italia Park. This is our history. These people really don't know half of the history they are opposing. I admit, he was not a saint, but was anyone. I went to Fannin Elementary School off of East Houston, then transferred to Travis Elementary. When I was going to Fannin, I was one of five white children. Everyone else was black. Some of my best friends that went to Travis, which was primarily Hispanic. I am not, nor have I ever been racist. I do not see color. I have never, I have never seen or judged someone by the color of their skin, and I believe most people in San Antonio feel the same. There's always been a wide array of our different skin colors, but we all believe red. We are all children of God. I do not go around trying to cause trouble, but I do expect the police department to take care of all citizens, which I do believe they have, but to deal with protesters, no, that is wrong on more levels than I can say, than I can say." Rick Lopez, Concerned American Native San Antonio Citizen, submitted, "Suggested names for Columbus Park. Columbus Park, Alamo City Park, Texas Park, River City Park, South Texas Park, Heritage Park, whatever the selection, don't make with any racial names." RP submitted, "As a life member of the Christopher Columbus Italian Society in San Antonio, I offer my opinion as to the suggested renaming of the above referenced site in San Antonio's CBD. My family's history stretches back to Naples, Italy, and yet is intertwined with the cultural histories of Spanish and Mexico, as the surname traveled through those countries prior to arriving in South Texas. A short video attached here about my family's legacy can be viewed, and is narrated by ABC TV celebrity and San Antonio native John Cianones. In honor of the millions of women and men who call themselves Latin, used here in the broadest term applicable, is strongly recommended that the place name be changed to Piazza Italia in recognition of the countless hours of sweat, blood, and tears my father, grandfather, and great-grandfather, that Ibiada Luciano respectively devoted and servitude to their communities." Kevin Harahill submitted, "Just another great example how San Antonio ignores big issues, but wants to make sure they look like they've accomplished something. Did they take care of teen pregnancy? No. High school dropout, lack of education in the city? No. Drug addiction, family violence, alcoholism? No. Homelessness? No. Improving wages of the citizens of the community? No. Murders and killing of innocent lives? No. But hey, they got to renaming a park. Woo, woo, great job, city leadership, expletive, clowns." Correct me if I'm wrong here, but wasn't the entire Columbus decade back in 1490 to 1500, and now 520 years later, we need to do something about this dangerous thug who apparently causes some of the citizens' sleepless nights as they fear the oppression he has caused? Let's see, did Columbus discover America? Well, no, but he found it for a different civilization who didn't know it was out there. Did we discover the moon, or did we just land on it? Did Columbus steal the land, brutalize some of the natives, steal their crops, horses, women? Yes, yes, he did, but didn't the Indian tribes do that to each other? Stronger, more powerful tribe took the land, horse, crops, and women from the weaker tribe. Seems it was how they resolved issues back in the 1500s. But as with most things, we ignore the history and just talk about the oppression that a certain race has caused. But hey, if renaming a park makes the city leadership feel moral or pious at accomplishing something they think is wrong, God bless them. It's the woke SJW thing to do in today's America, but stop acting like you want the opinion of the public. The decision has already been made. Stop treating us like fools or idiots." Phyllis Payne, "I would like to submit a renaming of the former Columbus Park to something that would commemorate the suffragist movement. With this being the 100th year of women's rights to vote and also an election year, it seems an appropriate time to recognize the fight it took for women to win the right to vote and citizenship. All around our city are parks, roads, buildings, and schools named for the prominent men in society, with little recognition being given to the ladies of history. Would be nice to see that change. Examples include Suffragist Park, Elizabeth A. Frye Park, Krista Adair Park, Votes for Women Park. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter." Gary Guy submits, "Wow, the city wants to change history. Christopher Columbus found this new world to expand the horizons of the world. What happened down there in the centuries was not his doing. Our city council is all about the cancel, cancel culture. Socialist and Marxist groups want to change our history, and the city council goes along with it. These are minority movements, and because they're loud, they get what they want. Some council people are included, regardless of the majority that do not want what is being proposed or already done. The mayor and the council people need to get a backbone and stand up for these small groups. A few thousand or less of protesters, rioters, and looters do not represent the approximately 1.3 million people in the city. The council and the mayor need to grow up." Anonymous submits, "I think the park's name change to Piazza Italia is a great idea." Elizabeth Stern submits, "Yes to changing the park name. I like the sound of the new name and think it's a good idea." Thank you. Sandra Hines submits, "I would like to see the park named Unity, that would include all individuals. The word unity has a meaning to all in standing together, that all voices are heard and respect the personal differences. I have designed this sculpture to reflect that we stand together." Pauline Nellis submits, "I don't see why we must change everything because someone doesn't care for the name of the park. We learned from our history. I don't care for the new name. I'm probably sure the city is already decided and doesn't even care for our input. There was a lot of reverse racism in the city. I vote, keep the name Columbus Park." Brenda Zenteno submits, "Piazza Italia sounds good." Rosanna Helsel submits, "Please keep the name of Christopher Columbus Park as it is and do not change it. Columbus was by no means a saint, but his actions did change the course of history. Please tell me we are not going down that slippery, that slippery slope where every building, street, city, et cetera, will be changed because they are named Columbus. There are other things and places named after historical figures whose lives had dark spots too. Where and when will this end?" Brandon Moore submitted, "Do not change the name of Columbus Park." Don Baimandi submitted, "I am a native San Antonio of American Italian descent and a proud active member of the Christopher Columbus Italian Society. I reluctantly support the city renaming Piazza Colombo Park to Piazza Italia Park. Ultimately, though, I am pro-San Antonio and I support a democratic solution to a divisive issue. Going forward, I truly hope the city will keep the park maintained as is one of the last, it is one of the last preserved areas downtown, home to historic landmarks, the Italian Hall, San Francisco de Paula Church, and the gateway to the San Pedro Creek expansion. I, like others, believe this area deserves the same attention given higher traffic areas in the downtown corridor. Thank you, thank you to all for your prompt attention given to the entirety of this contentious matter. I appreciate how hard you have worked to come up with an equitable solution. See San Antonio when, when I'll Italia." Linda Conan submitted, "I support the name change to Piazza Italia. The Italian community has been a part of the Martin Street neighborhood for well over 100 years. The city of San Antonio, through urban renewal, made the decision to move the Italians out of the area, unfortunately wiping out all of the homes that surrounded the park and adjacent streets. And that is why the hall, the church, and the park and its legacy are so important to us. I appreciate any and all efforts to name the park appropriately to honor Italian Americans that built up the area and today continue to support our city and downtown San Antonio." Last one before I'll switch it over to my colleague Veronica. Dizel Gonzalez submits, "If my opinion matters to you, I prefer no change. At this point, if it's going to cause more to change it, then don't. Nothing that we have even been taught in school is correct anyway at this point. I can give two expletive, as long as it doesn't cost any more money, unless you're paying court personally. If you care to know enough of what's been taught in English, here's a couple of examples for you. Enough women, action, goatee equals fish. Sound it out." And I'll transfer it over to my colleague Veronica.
Matthew Guido submitted, "I am a second-generation Italian-American here in San Antonio. I was born and raised here and couldn't be more proud of that. My grandfather migrated to San Antonio from the Calabari region of Italy when he was just a boy to call this great city home. With him were a few sisters, cousins, and local kids and families that had enough money to make the journey. They settled in that area we call Piazza Colombo, along with all the other Italian immigrants' families to form a community, a safe place with familiar faces and language. My grandfather looked after the San Francisco de Paula Church and the Columbus Hall until the day he died. It was his home, and now everyone's home, that had ancestors migrate from Italy to San Antonio. We, as Italian community, have a sense of responsibility to the hall, the church, the park, because of our ancestors chose that area to call home. We love that park, and that is why we, as CCIS Board, decided to be proactive in working with the city council to take the statue down and return it to a safe place. That is also why we, as CCIS Board, decided to be proactive and work with the city to rename the park to Piazza Italia. We realize the social landscape, and we want to respect what is happening rather than fight it. That park has always been taken care of by the Italian community. There is no reason to change that now. I am in favor of the name Piazza Italia." Janet Hobbs submitted, "I have lived in San Antonio my whole life, and I will be 72 next month. My mom was Rosie Grneary, and she was born and grew up in the family home on Martin Street, right where the underpass, directly across the street from the park, a little to the right if you were looking at Martin Street with your back to the park. I grew up visiting relatives and friends in the Italian community that lived in that whole area. Some on Martin Street, some off Pecos Street, and some on Morales Street. My grandfather's gas station was on the corner of Frio and Martin Street. Many other Italian-owned businesses were in the area as well. Although it made me very sad that the statue of Columbus had been removed, I understand, but I would be so happy if you and the committee would be so kind to rename Columbus Park to Piazza Italia. There are still many left of my generation and a few in the generation before mine that have very fond memories of the whole Italian neighborhood. The whole area will always be the Italian neighborhood. If you have any questions or I can be further assistance, please feel free to reach me." Elizabeth Seriani submitted, "My parents and I have always been associated with the Italian Society and the San Francisco de Paula Catholic Church. I would like to go on record as supporting the name change of the Christopher Columbus Park to Piazza Italia. Thank you." Margie Lucy submitted, "I understand you are the point person for the renaming of the park which once honored Christopher Columbus. Quite honestly, I do not feel the statue should have ever been defaced or should have come down, but since the city council has decided on this course of action, I propose that the park be renamed after a hero of the Alamo. I realize this may offend some of the noisy minority that seems bent on causing as much chaos as they can, but that is my proposal. These folks that are bullying, that are pulling statues down remind me of ISIS. This group destroyed as many antiquities as they could in the areas they controlled in the Middle East because they said everything built before Mohammed had to be destroyed. I do appreciate being allowed input into this subject, since so many of the statues in this country are being pulled down without any vote or input from the citizens of this country. Thank you." Maria Vega submitted, "Plain and simple, San Antonio's council, much like many other cities under Democratic Party control, have gone deranged. It's terrifying to see how much under Marxist ideas all of you operate. As an immigrant, I'm quite upset and in this, and in disbelief as to why, in the name of God, you want to support Antifa and BLM protests, which claiming the virus, claim, claim the virus rate is up. If I wanted to live in a Marxist nation with so little to no freedom of speech and being ruled by leftists, I would have moved to Cuba. One of the board members of the BLM movement is a convicted terrorist, full of..." One of the board members of the BLM movement is a convicted terrorist full of hate and this is a group calling the shots now. Joaquin Costa called for a botat agoya because his petulant Marxist thinks it's okay to attack Hispanic businesses that don't support his Marxist agenda. San Antonio has fallen, much like fifty percent of the country. What a disgrace. Pedro Ruiz submitted, I am for the renaming of Columbus to Yanaguana Park. Columbus Park was not thought about until eighteen ninety when Italians flourished on the northern area of town. The indigenous people along the Yanaguana were forcibly removed and integrated into some of San Antonio's missions like Mission Concepcion. Many tribes reside at Mission Concepcion. The indigenous people helped the colonizers, but the missions with their labor as converted Christian slaves. Most of the indigenous people were integrated into San Antonio populations, making the San Antonio a brown town. By having a park that honors Christopher Columbus that was responsible for the genocide of many indigenous people in our land and that was raped, murdered by colonizers is a reminder of the atrocities. Please rename Columbus Park to Yanaguana Park. From Joey Flores Sarti, I fully support the name change of the park to Piazza Italia. Elizabeth Berial submitted, I concur to change the name. Ed White submitted, my humble opinion is to use available funds to help our citizens that need help as opposed to renaming our streets and parks. Mona Dickens submitted, the majority of Americans are fed up with people trying to erase our history. Columbus Park, Columbus statue were to honor Christopher Columbus's discovery of America and had nothing to do with his personal way of leaving. Leave the park name alone and put the statue back. Mark James submitted, I am a citizen residing in San Antonio and I am greatly opposed to removing the statue of Christopher Columbus and renaming Columbus Park. Both ideas are utter and complete nonsense. My last email and then I'll have Ryan take over. Patty Guido submitted, I am currently a member of Christopher Columbus Italian Society. I am in favor of renaming the park Piazza di Italia, which would keep the history and heritage of the area which was where the original Italians settled here in San Antonio. Thank you.
Thank you Veronica. Don submits, do not kowkow to the mob. Tell those who are intent on destroying the traditions and heroes of America that thugs and criminals do not set the course of this great city. Anarchy is not the way forward. Fight off the animals. Do not capitulate. Keep Christopher Columbus. If there are other heroes to be recognized, build more statues. We need more heroes, not fewer. Jay Pantusa submits, I support the renaming of Piazza de Colombo to Piazza Italia. Below is my rationale as a second generation of the Italian community in San Antonio. The church, Christopher Columbus Hall, and the park are all part of our heritage and mean so much to our community. We believe we have put forth our best effort to acknowledge the cultures of others in San Antonio and I agree to take down the statue of Christopher Columbus. Please let me know if there's anything I can do to reinforce my support for the renaming of this park and honor the Italian immigrants that made that neighborhood the home for decades. I believe the Italian community has already suffered enough by the urban renewal project in the late nineteen sixties and early nineteen seventies. The implementation of this project caused the Italians who called this part of town home to sell off their homesteads and move to the suburbs. The hall, church, and park are the only thing we have left. Robert Hendricks submits, I recommend you rename Columbus Park Columbus Park Forever. I also recommend you resign your position and study the history of the impact of Columbus's positive impact on Western civilization despite your politically correct motivation. Elizabeth Walzax Christodoro submits, please accept the name change for Columbus Park to Piazza Italia Park. This change has been in the works for some time now and it really needs to be completed today in this meeting. I am in agreement with the proposed name change of Columbus Park to Piazza Italia. At least there will be continuance of the Italian heritage that has influenced the downtown area. I am sorry that the statue had to be removed. Larry Folds submits a new name for the park, Wuhan Virus Park. Lindsay Magaro submits, I am in support of the name change from Columbus Park to Piazza Italia. I think this will solidify and continue the legacy that my grandparents established in San Antonio so many years ago. Jim Dutton submits, I am writing to support the renaming of San Antonio's Columbus Park to Piazza Italia. As an American of Italian descent, I am proud to be part of the city's thriving Italian culture. My entire life was spent in my birthplace of Lexington, Kentucky. It was not until I moved here that I had the opportunity to play an active role in my heritage. Unfortunately, my hometown did not have any public spaces dedicated to any of the proud cultures who helped build their very communities, Asian, German, Irish, or otherwise. Removing the Christopher Columbus statue was a proactive step in ensuring that no group would feel the sting of humiliation or marginalization. However, renaming the park to Piazza Italia dedicates the gifts of our Italian ancestors to a public location for all of San Antonio to share. From Lois Luccocca, I wholeheartedly endorse the renaming of Columbus Park to Piazza Italia. In keeping with San Antonio's history of love, of family, and inclusion, I believe this to be a respectful and honorable means in keeping with San Antonio's history of love and family and inclusion. I believe this to be a respectful, excuse me, my apologies. I believe this is to be a respectful and honorable means of saluting the tremendous contributions that the Italian immigrants made to help grow San Antonio, become part of the mosaic of the Alamo City, and to recognize today's Italian community's commitment and passion to our great city. Kathy Greco submitted, I am in favor of changing the name of the park to Piazza Italia. Fernando La Viada submits, I am in support of the name change from Columbus Park to Piazza Italia. Rick Magar submits, what an awesome grateful day it will be when the new name Piazza Italia is in place, where the Italian families migrating here in San Antonio choose to gather and praise God and build such a fine society that helps San Antonio grow and prosper. Although I am a relatively new member of Christopher Columbus Italian Society, my great-great-grandfather was the first president of the Christopher Columbus Italian Society and my great-grandfather an honorary member some years later. I could not be prouder of them plowing through all the racism back in the eighteen hundreds and standing tall in the building of their society and Italian families in San Antonio, Texas. I just wish I was born back then to be a part of such a strong Christian family in the city they love. Our final submitted written comment is from Sam Greco. I am in favor of the park name change to Piazza Italia. My father came over from Italy in nineteen seventeen and my mother and two sisters followed in nineteen twenty-seven. They lived in the Italian neighborhood near Christopher Columbus Italian Society Building and the church. I still own the original homestead. I am president of the Christopher Columbus Italian Society. Thank you. This concludes the written public comment portion of public comments. We will move forward to voicemails. We have approximately five here. If you will bear with me on the voicemails, we've asked folks to leave phone numbers and addresses so we can get back in contact if needed. So I'm going to skip that part of the voicemail. So there are several voicemails that I'll need to start midway through. So if you'll forgive me for any lapse in audio for a second. Our first voicemail is from Anna Lou Eisner.
And my comment concerning the proposal for Columbus Park is, fund people that deface the statue, have them arrested, repair the statue, put it back up, and do not rename the park. It should remain Columbus Park. Thank you.
Our next voicemail comment is from Elizabeth Cicero.
In response to the travesty of removing a Christopher Columbus statue that had been vandalized sensibly. It had no sense, no sense to it. It's stupid. And to put a name like Pizano Park, which is patronizing, it's patronizing. You just call it what it is, City Park. And then there's no monuments, no statues or anything to put up so that further vandalism cannot occur. And some of your party lines, your Democratic people, should be wearing, instead of a face mask, a muzzle. A muzzle for all the rhetoric and venom that they spew from their mouths. In particular Castro, what a hypocrite. What a hypocrite, going against an Hispanic company, Goya. Goya, of all places. Oh my God, hypocrisy, hypocrisy. You start with the statues in the park and it goes further and further and further. Absolutely insane. It's disgusting how San Antonio will allow this. We'll all drink in the damn Kool-Aid, but not me. Goodbye.
Ms. Cicero submitted two voicemails with a maximum of two minutes, since the first voicemail was only a minute and thirty seconds. We will play the second portion of that voicemail.
I just left you a message. My last name is Cicero. And if you don't gather what the nationality is, it's Italian. So I am extremely, extremely, extremely dissatisfied with this situation here. Where are my rights? Where are the rights of everybody else here? The mob can only carry a cardboard sign or paint something down and because it's not in their terms politically correct, this is what's done? Anarchy, anarchy to the fullest extent.
Our next voicemail is from Anonymous.
You know, it's really a shame when you have to rename, destroy history. That is really bad and really wrong. I'm not a bigot. I'm not a racist. But history is history. And you can't erase what is in the past. And if you do, you're doomed to repeat it.
Our next voicemail is from Ernesto Garcia.
You know, instead of removing statues that's our history, we should remove the city council for literally a handful of people instead of the two million people in San Antonio. This is really, really ridiculous. I only hope that people wake up and replace everybody in the city council, including the mayor. Travis Park was a sick, unbelievable move. I only hope that more people call and let you know, because I'm one of the second ones, okay? But I just can't take this anymore as far as removing our history. I encourage you guys to quit, just leave everything alone, okay? And replace what Travis said.
And our final voicemail is from Andrew Guido.
I am strongly in favor of the park being named Piazza Italia, the street it resides on. And that is all I got. Thank you guys for all you do.
Okay, so at this point, this concludes the public comment portion. As the notice of public hearing stated, all public comments for the hearing were due by four P M. yesterday. And so these were the public comments that have been submitted into public record. At this point, we will ask our committee members, we are going to do a vote for our committee members, whether you are in support of or against, but I will need to do so in a motion in a second format. So we have our four members of our committee, which is going to be Homer Garcia, Shannon Miller, Eric Sandin, and Paolo Christodoro. If I can have a motion, please. Go ahead and take yourself off mute.
Ryan, can, before we motion, can we summarize the total number of responses?
Yes, sir.
Those that were in favor of the renaming, of renaming the park versus?
Yes, sir. My apologies. I did miss that. In total, we received fifty-eight total responses. Of those, thirty-six responses were in favor of renaming the park and twenty-two responses were opposed to renaming the park. So with that, I will entertain a motion from one of the four members of the committee.
I motion to approve the renaming of the park from Columbus Park to Piazza Italia Park.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Paolo Christodoro with a second, okay? I'm going to do a roll call vote for, I would be in support of the motion of renaming Columbus Park to Piazza Italia. Nay would be a vote against renaming the park from Columbus Park to Piazza Italia. I'll begin with Homer Garcia.
Yay.
Paolo Christodoro?
Yay.
Eric Sandin?
Uh, yay.
Shannon Miller?
Yay.
Okay, so all in favor of the motion of renaming Columbus Park to Piazza Italia Park? At that point, at this point, the formal portion of public comments and the public hearing portion is done. I will send it back over to Homer to do a closing.
Thank you, Ryan. So the public hearing for the proposed renaming of Columbus Park is drawing to an end. We've reported all of the comments into public record and have proceeded with voting on that proposed renaming of Columbus Park in Council District One. Before we depart, I want to thank Councilman Virgil Trevino for being with us this evening and for your service to the community. I also want to thank our committee members, Shannon Miller, Eric Sandin, Paolo Christodoro, for taking time as well and serving on this committee. And for everybody who is logged in and listening or watching virtually, I want to thank you for joining us this evening, being part of the public participation process. And want to wish everyone a good evening and stay safe. This concludes the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.